Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty?
I'm here.
Councilman Questa, Councilman Groga.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President.
Here, eight members present. Madam Clerk.
Oh.
This is a regular conference of the City Council. It has incorporated the annual meeting notice of 2013 which was filed in the City Court's Office and posted on the voting board by December 27, 2012. As soon as to a Star Legend, a Home New Tribute, and compliance with the provision of over public means law of New Jersey. At this time, we have public speaking. Any resident or taxpayer would like to come forward and address the City Council at any matter. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again. Yes?
I've come from this city. Sharp change, the mayor of New York collected Rolls Royce and supposedly what they say in the news centers, Jesse Jackson Jr. collecting Rolls Royce watches.
Okay. Anyone else? Any resident or taxpayer, like the just City Council at any matter? Please step forward, state your name and your address for the record. Saying done, close that portion of the meeting.
Ready?
Excellent, you're ready.
Letter dated February 14, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to East Coast Emergency Lighting Millstone Township, New Jersey for the purchase of light, signs, electrical wiring, for three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor SUV vehicles for the police department at a total cost of $25,943.10.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 14, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Herdrick Heat Services Inc., Millford, Delaware for the purchase of one 2013 Chevrolet Impala four-door sedan at a cost of $17,406 and five 2013 Dodge Avenger sedans at a cost of $77,475 for a total cost of $94,881.
Any question?
Any replacement?
I was just going to say, thank you, Councilwoman.
Are there replacement vehicles?
That's the answer, yes. They are replacement vehicles.
All right, could you do?
They're supposed to list the replacement vehicles in the bottom.
All right, Councilwoman. Do we get you that info?
Okay, thank you.
I guess she kind of, she kind of echoed us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. You can, yeah, I ask you questions. But you can put in the same thing. I want to make sure they list those for us for the replacement.
Absolutely.
If they do not get them to by the time next Tuesday, before next Tuesday, we're going to hold it up, okay? Okay? So we're holding up just in case until we get the.
So we're not putting it out until we get the information.
Okay, okay. Understand? Just to hold until we get, we get the replacement list to us, then we put it up. If not, it's going to be held up. And also, I would, one other step, right? I'd like to have a estimation, why did he need so many extra vehicles? What's, who were they assigned to? Can you drift one?
Sure, I just want to make a quick comment on, on this, these vehicles are, are to be assigned to the Health Department.
I understand.
We get a lot of mileage out of their vehicles. It's been close to 20 years since, since the Health Department has gotten an order of vehicles.
I understand. As long as they replacement, if they're replacement, I mean, we just had a new change of hand and all of a sudden now we need five, five, six new vehicles, like, like that, out of the game, out of the box. And, and I, we need a good explanation why. Absolutely, okay? Thank you.
Letter dated February 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Fellman Lumber Company, Brooklyn, New York for the purchase of lumber and associated materials for various departments for the period February 4, 2013 through June 30, 2013 at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
No question. Go ahead.
Letter dated February 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Sherwin-Williams Company, Cleveland, Ohio, for paid and related supplies for various departments for the period February 5, 2013 through July 31, 2014 at a cost not to exceed $50,000. That's for paint and related supplies.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman?
I brought this up to Bridgette last pre-council meeting. I don't know what the procedure is, but can you make sure that they have some type of procedure as to who picks up the lumber?
Oh, and the lumber portion?
Lumber and the paint.
And paint?
Both, you know, who picks up the lumber, who has to sign off on it? Is there a procedure for that? Just to make sure nobody gets stupid.
Absolutely. So he requested we leave some information on?
Not any request, I just wanted to find, just make sure that they got some sort of procedure in place.
Well, you want, you want that, you asking to see that, or you want?
No, I just want to make sure they have one.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Being that he requested that we have one in place, can we find out what are the procedure which are they going through, let's say, Mr. A to Mr. B to Mr. C? And then who actually oversees Mr. A, Mr. B, and Mr. C?
I think that's what I was saying, I think you want, you want to see.
I doubt, definitely, because, you know, I think she mentioned last time, if I recall correctly, it's up to each department supervised. I think that's what she said, but.
Okay, well.
It's good to know.
I'm going to make sure it's clear before we ask what we're looking for.
Clear as ice.
Yeah?
Yeah, heaven, heaven. Clear as ice.
Clear as ice.
Letter dated February 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Bayer Ford, Maristown, New Jersey for the purchase of three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor SUV vehicles at a cost of $86,966.25.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 15, 2013, from the Business Administrator being satisfied that an emergency did exist, recommends the award of a contract to Regional Industries LLC Elizabeth for the employment of a tub grinding service to remove 12,000 cubic yards of dead trees and tree debris currently stored in limited space on city property in the amount of $81,160, and this is for information.
Any question? Yes, Councilman?
Mr. President, don't we have a special grant from Hurricane whatever, or from FEMA people helping pay for some of this cost?
I don't know. Do we have anything?
That, that's the intention. The intention is to submit this to be reimbursed under.
To FEMA.
The FEMA grant, yes.
Well, anyway, as you know, we had a devastating storm hit us from Sandy Hitles, and if anyone passed power trouble street where the old bus park is now located, you guys saw the humongous pile of rubbish there. Well, that's what this tug grinder did. It got rid of that old mess there in a matter of days, maybe a week. So it was, it was well worth the money.
Did it absorb all the oil on the ground also?
No, it took a little bit of oil. We wasn't concerned underground. It took a bump now.
One day.
One thing at a time.
One thing at a time, Frank.
Okay.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Eagle Point, just make sure, okay, Thoroughfare, New Jersey for ammunition for the police department for the period February 4, 2013 to February 28, 2015 at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Louis Barbado Landscaping Inc., Holbrook, New York for the purchase of 100 little leaf linden trees to be planted throughout the city and residential areas at a total cost of $31,800.
Any question?
Get your tree request in order, James.
I was just going to say, just get your requests in. Need that, guys. Okay, put it on.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Store Tractor Company, Bransford, New Jersey for the purchase of Toro Infield Pro 3040 in the amount of $18,722.40 and Toro Brown Master 320D30345 in the amount of $29,020.93 for a total cost of $47,743.33.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Spahn Ranch Industry, California for the purchase of pre-cast skate park equipment for the Holland Playground at a total cost of $177,448.12.
Any question? As you know, guys, this is, this is for that skate park we talked about, about a year or so, and we're hoping, and we're informed with this and, and hope that we have it up to run by end of summer. Okay? Put it on. Get the skate fit.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the County Union, Department of Human Services, Division of Youth Services, and accept a grant award from the Union County Youth Services Commission grant fund to be utilized for the night watch supervision program under the Juvenile Justice Commission points of continuum disposition during the contract period of January 1, 2013 through December 31, 2013 in the amount of $11,000.
Any question?
Yeah, I do have a question. What's this for? Is this going to be for the curfew?
I think it's for the curfew.
Okay. Where's it going to run at?
It's going to run at the hospital.
So they're going to bring the kids to the hospital?
Okay, Council? Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, just a quick question. For the curfew, from what time period to what time period is it going to be enforced?
10 o'clock, right there, 10 o'clock.
From what days? I know, like, I was told it's mostly during the summertime.
Yeah, summertime.
So they usually start June to the end of August?
No, to like November.
To November.
Until Halloween.
Great, thank you.
Until Halloween.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2013 State Fiscal Year Budget by Budget Amendment, Chapter 159.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer recommending that City Council consider the approval of a refunding bond ordinance in the amount of $1,600,000 to refund the 2004 early retirement bonds which will capture a cost savings to the taxpayers of the city by refinancing existing debt service obligations for the outstanding 2004 early retirement bonds.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer recommending that your honorable body request the Director of the Division of Local Finance to make the following estimated corrections in the 2013 municipal budget to account for the city's local share of grants approved subsequent to the adopted budget, matching funds city share from, from $817,414 to $785,614. Local share green in Union County from zero to $31,800.
Any question? Go ahead.
Mr. President, the $31,000 is the amount that we paid for the tree that we just planted?
Would this?
This is just a correction to a budget line item that reduces the amount of the city's share by 31,800, which is the county's portion of the county green. This is very different than.
Than the tree. Thank you.
Okay, Council?
Thank you, thank you.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that a resolution is required by your honorable body authorizing to provide for the issuance of refunding bonds for the refunding of a portion of the city's 2005 general improvement bonds and providing for the form, maturities, and other details of said bonds, authorizing a preliminary official statement and an official statement providing for the sale of the refunding bonds and approving and authorizing the execution and delivery by the city of a continuing disclosure certificate, a bond purchase agreement, and an escrow deposit agreement.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer requesting that your honorable body review the city's quarterly budget revenues and appropriations, and this is for information.
Okay, go ahead.
Letter dated February 19, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting permission to accept a Westinghouse 60-inch BR 6097 black screen television to be placed at O'Donnell Dempsey Senior Center from Councilman Carlos Sedano.
Any question?
I think I need one, and the Nikki Walker said.
I just wanted to share, recently I went during a time period there watching a movie, and I'm not even exaggerating, every 30 seconds the screen would shake. So I, I just wanted to bless them, so.
That was amazing.
Very nice. Thank you, Council.
Can they bless you this time too, please?
There's, there's a limit to my blessing ability.
How big is your budget?
I know, let me tell you. It's not that. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Letter dated February 11, 2013, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatch Mot McDonald Millburn, New Jersey to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis with a not to exceed cost of $51,500 plus reimbursables in connection with the update of the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan addressing natural hazards.
Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 13, 2013, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Nbar Services Inc., North Brunswick, New Jersey to provide civil engineering design services in connection with the detailed design of the Elizabeth River Trail Phase Two at a cost not to exceed $123,600 plus reimbursable.
Okay, question?
Yeah, what is these Phase Two?
Phase Two is.
Or straight to port.
South, south, south.
South, south, sorry. All right. But I noticed that all this money's being spent over there in that six wars.
Yeah, definitely.
Something happened over there.
I know, I spent a lot of hours. I ain't last, man.
All this six wars, we got to, we got to something about this.
Okay, letter dated February 13, 2013, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to USA Architects, Somerville, New Jersey to provide architectural services for the preparation of conceptual designs for the record retention room to be located on the third floor of the Public Works Maintenance Facility, 400 Atlantic Street at a cost not to exceed $25,000.
Third floor is a good place to put papers.
Okay. Any question? Go ahead.
Letter dated February 14, 2013, from the Director of Public Works requesting permission to have lanes placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here to a near the park hereup for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of $3,030.55.
Any question? Go ahead.
Okay, Councilmen Coleman would like to commend Lieutenant William Dugan and a memorial for Ms. Mamie Tyler.
Okay.
And then we have the closing section.
Well, just before we go close, you guys got that draft for the, the Councilwoman had to add for the, the draft resolution for the.
It's unread, right? It says, "The board of, the board of..."
Take it and.
...requires that that is provided.
That's, that's the table that I've picked.
That that is provided.
Take it and, and scribble on it, and then get it back to us how we want it to read, okay?
Because I've already done a question.
Yes, well, she's got a, the City Clerk said I got a request about it, so you, so you guys can take it and scribble on it, get it back to us, I wouldn't be ready.
It just said, it just should say that we want the public speaking section to be in the, in the beginning of the meeting, that's all.
Where, where you want to make correction there, Councilman?
Okay, where you put it at? Long, that's in the.
It's at the bottom. It's the last paragraph.
Okay, that's all, that's the main thing. The main resolution was about making sure that the public portion, section of the meeting will move to the top of the agenda.
Okay.
So, okay, whatever legal language they use is fine with me.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate it.
I want to make sure we get, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Well, we are on the same subject. It says 574 signature petition was presented. I don't see any signature in the, in the bags that I, that I received. I don't have any.
Yes, it's there.
This is a, I know, there's no signature here.
Oh, there's no signatures?
No, they presented that to the board.
They presented.
Oh, they presented to the board, not to us.
No, then we did a petition.
I thought we got a petition also.
Then she presented a petition.
Yeah, I thought she left it with us.
I gave you what she gave me.
Okay.
Well, then we have to strike the 574 signature from the resolution, Mr. President. If you don't have any records, how can we put it in?
What says that they have?
They said they collected it.
They corrected it.
But it's not, we presented something that I never saw, or never got a copy of it, so I don't feel comfortable.
Well, you just can't write a, a petition that you should not put that in here unless, unless your office received this.
Well, we can't say it has collected because we didn't collect.
Right.
But strike them out.
But can we get a copy of the petition?
We'll have them put us, so then the resolution will match the.
I doubt that. I'll call her if she has.
If they do not, if they do not submit it, then we got to scratch.
Yeah.
Well, I thought the lady who says that she had the petitions in here.
But she said this is what she gave us.
That's what she gave me.
That's what she did, yeah. You should have a copy in, in the court.
She states that they collected 574.
Look in this, in your.
Well, it's, it's in her, her testimony attachments, but it's not, the signatures themselves are not.
It's not here, correct. But this is what she gave.
Oh, okay, she put it in here.
It's put in.
Mr. President, my only concern is, I know that the main focus was to move the public speaking to the front, and here in the resolution it says that sometimes like student performances and awards are in the beginning. Like personally, like I know that it's one, two, three, four.
The fourth, whatever it is.
Yeah, just because sometimes like, you know, the student performance is, is great to have it in the beginning, but as long as the public speaking, you know, they move it up, that's what we're really recommending. So I'm, I'm just suggesting for us to remove pretty much that part because that kind of dwells, like, we don't know from time to time like certain things that should be highlighted, student worthy in the beginning. We're pretty much saying that it should go sometimes, you know, like before even the students and all of that. So I'm just suggesting removing just that, that, that part right there.
Well, basically, it says we have the public participation portion of the meeting is ready to be placed at the end, and then you're saying it's a long agenda that includes, you know, it just tells you what makes up the long agenda.
Unless, unless you remove the part that describes a long agenda. Plays at the end of a long agenda and public and, yeah, and public and private business. Just because highlighting specifically the student performances, awards, and acknowledgements, I, I believe there's definitely a worthy moment where, even we do it as a.
We can check that out.
We can take our student performance awards and acknowledgements, it just says, "At the end of a long agenda that includes public and private business."
Right, right. That'll be fine. Thank you.
It's okay, Council?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Just to go back to the, to the resolution, I'm all in favor to allow the public to, to speak first because usually it's a long agenda at the Board of Education meeting. But I was watching one of the meeting, and at the beginning, like we do, like you do read as a president of the City Court, she reads as an open public meeting act of St. Louis, Jersey, blah, 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 blah. Board of Education actually clearly states at the beginning that this meeting, it is, it is a meeting of the Board of Education, okay, and which the public could be part of it, but they are at the mercy of the board. This is.
I know what they say, Frank, but any public meeting.
Yeah, I understand.
You have to have public speaking.
Well, that, that justification came from some kind of a Yale University professor or whatever, attorney. Again, if you pay attention to the language, I mean, I don't know, right?
I understand, I understand.
You know what I'm saying, many?
I, I know what they read, but I don't think they're right.
Again, if I, if I, if I listen to what they read, and it makes sense, I'm sure that also they have to make sense, that if you have a group, let's have 100 people, a citizen that goes before the board, you want to allow them to speak before, instead of waiting until 11, 12 o'clock at night. That's what the thing that, that we are for, and we understand the cry of those people. That's what we're trying to do. But at the same time, they also have a tremendous agenda if, if the Board of Education becomes a forum for politics.
No, no, but we do, but we limit it to a half an hour. They could limit it to a half an hour.
They've got to limit it to a half an hour. Can we do it?
Can I finish?
We limit it to a half an hour.
You, that could limit, like we do five minutes per person. But again, I mean, you know, Pat, not for anything, it's just a matter, I have to express my feeling and my opinion too. I told you, I never go before the Board of Education meeting unless there's something happened and I explained to you what's the reason. I'm all in favor, I'm supporting this. I mean, you know, the only thing I don't feel comfortable unless they're bringing a petition of the 574 signature that I didn't see it, and I don't want to be part of the language that I have to vote for.
Council, we, we addressed it, we addressed it, we addressed that.
I know, I know, but that's what I'm saying.
What, what takes care of that point?
I have to, I don't interrupt anybody when I speak, Mr. President, but not for anything. I try to come up with a point that somebody doesn't like to hear the point that is a lot valid and clear. If you pay attention to the Board of Education when they read at the beginning, the description, you'll find out why they're doing this. Might be they're right, might be they're wrong. It's up to the right people to make the right decision.
Right. All right. All right, I need a motion to go a close session.
Ask somebody.
All right, move that second.
Chairman, I'm going to ask you to excuse yourself.
You got to leave? Council? Yes.
I'll be a steward.
Uh, Councilwoman, you're leaving also?
No, no, I'm going to stay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll have to read.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, P. 1975, Chapter 31 permits the exclusion
of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney client privilege, minutes will be kept in once the above, um, once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved that the public be excluded, excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty?
All right. All right. All right.
Councilwoman, oh, he's excused. Councilman Torres?
Hi.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Hi.
Councilman Keenan?
Hi.
Councilman Sedano?
Hi.
Councilman Mazza?
Hi.
President. And they do have a consultant on site during the entire day that they're working.
We had a consultant that's at part of the, he just. Isn't that like a construction manager or something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's also, we're also making issues for reimbursement.
Because that was like a brand new rule for, you know, I'm talking about pre-discovery.
It's a piece of. You can, Council, I mean, we can get more information.
Yeah, we can get more information. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Torres?
Uh, yes, last week, Mr. President, I tabled the Brand New Day Renaissance Program.
Okay.
Uh, today I still want to table the, the 20 units for the youth belt.
Okay.
But I would like to pass, uh, the rehab for the other two projects.
Okay. We'll put rehab back on, and you still look for information on the...
That's correct.
That's it, council? Councilwoman Torres, you got one? That's it. Councilwoman Keenan?
You know, the, uh, just one item, the, uh, We had very great heavy winds the other, the other day In the area, about 50, 55 miles per hour. I was wondering if when the weather breaks, two things, If the city tree department could proactively Look at some of the major thoroughfares To see if there are large limbs that are potentially at risk. And especially, and write a letter to the county Because during Hurricane Sandy, The city was very, very good about handling the trees. And I noticed that the county, especially on Galloping Hill, Was many, many days before they got to it. But it seems clear that if they could be proactive In looking at some of the overhanging branches that could come down, Maybe we have less of a problem the next time it's a heavy storm Because they are coming. Thank you.
And I guess, council, that's it? Councilwoman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to have a memorial For Mrs. Perari, who passed away, 99 years old. Alda Perari's mother, Maria. 99 and almost three weeks ago, we've been 100 years of age.
Wow.
And if the son was alive, I think she should have been alive today. Unfortunately, to the pain of her son that lost Actually destroyed a mother. Uh, Mr. President, I, just in case if there's nobody That yet made a commitment for Youth and City Government Day, I would like to be the chairperson this year, if you don't mind.
You want to be chairperson?
Second?
Thank you.
I'll give you $2 to be here. But you got a person, a new TV at the...
What's up?
I have an old one.
No, I'm, matter of fact, the councilman from the, uh, from the 4th ward, What, a 60-inch?
60-inch.
I watch 70.
Actually, I've seen 80. So go for the 80.
Council, when I become a most reverend, I'll be glad to give you a movie TV.
Oh, my child.
Anything else, councilman?
Yes. It will be wise to have Youth and City Government Day Because of AP exam the last Tuesday, Which will be the 28th of May, I'm mistaken.
Okay.
And then wherever the location, you know.
Okay.
I'll let you know. So, okay?
Sure. Okay.
I might have another memorial, but I'll let the secretary have, okay? I just, I can't remember last name.
So we get it till before the...
I will, thank you, that's it.
Councilwoman Sedano?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. One, if it's okay with councilman, the loading zone in Pennsylvania. I know it was supposed to be... It was supposed to be on the agenda, but for some reason I thought
Ah, because I didn't call.
She called it, so...
I didn't call it, no.
Isn't it, isn't it up?
No.
No.
It better not be out.
Okay, but do you want...
Because it definitely not going to be.
You guys, okay, you want to go, you want to put it up?
Yeah, if it could be on the...
Because we didn't vote on it yet, so it should not be out.
Okay.
Vote on Pennsylvania.
So you want to put it on there?
Yes.
Okay, Pennsylvania.
Come on, well, you got to think...
My, my second thing, I actually used some of my... My ink at home to show you exactly. I know I've been bringing up my concern with The intersection of Cross Avenue and Alina Street.
The 4th, the 4th intersection?
Yeah, I brought this up, they did a traffic study And the major thing is that they said, um, that's not, Like, you know, they didn't pass a traffic study. But my major concern, if you see Cross Avenue and Alina Street, Where that little arrow thing is, that's where Robert Morris is. And the majority of the kids walk down Cross Avenue And they pass that intersection, and they spread out Throughout the entire neighborhood. And if you've seen the picture below, um, that restaurant, Building on the left-hand side, goes really close to the corner. Um, and many cars come around Stanton Avenue And they speed up Alina. Um, so, and that, and this picture to the right, This was an accident that occurred at the beginning of this month. So my, my major concern is really the safety of the children. Um, just the kids coming down.
Did you talk to traffic?
I did.
What did they say?
And they, they reached, they did the traffic study, But they were looking at it, I guess, from a standpoint Of more the traffic flow. But the major thing is the kids that cross that street. And the cars don't stop. So even though the traffic, um, that goes down Alina Might not be, like, tremendous, But it only takes one car just going down.
Have you been asked and it's all the way down?
I'm there, have. And this picture's actually one from this month, from February. The one that I included. Um, and then with that, I reached out to our attorney And he said that as a body, we're able to, um, still recommend it If it's the desire of the board, of the governing body. So I'm just reaching out to everyone to see if we're, we would be able To support this.
And what did traffic, but normally if traffic tells us They advise against it, we know we don't go against traffic.
Well, it's...
I mean, I've been there 20 years, and I never... Can you...
I'll investigate it.
Can you investigate, councilman?
I have a copy.
I have a problem, but, you know, usually they, we try to...
No, and I, I completely, like, my, my major thing, I definitely want to adhere to what they say. Um, but this is a major concern. And I personally, I don't want to wait until, you know, I mean, Something happens before something.
I thought that way every day.
Yeah.
What, what, what we'll do, we'll reach out to traffic.
Can you find that?
The status on it and see if we can do...
Um, and just one more thing. I received an email from a resident from Elizabeth. Um, he, he just wanted for me to bring it up Before City Council, that the State Department of Human Services... I don't know if you're aware of the Woodbridge Developmental Center In the North Jersey Developmental Center. Um, Governor Christie's looking to cut, cut them both.